Anything can happen to anybody, you know. We want to be prepared for these situations.
We believe that holding up the traditions and the spirit of Martin Luther King's means reaching out and making sure we take care of the least of these.
We are educated people. We are people that have careers, have had careers. We are people that want to make a change. My heart rejoices that we have good people that, you know, do think about us. And now, look, I have a place I can call home.
They were some of the most vicious acts of terror in LA's history. And now, a new book looks back at the fear and frenzy that swept our city during the Night Stalker period. Gil Reyes takes us to LA's Central Library.
It was the spring and summer of 1985. Back to the Future was the number one movie in the theaters. Live aid concerts raised tens of millions of dollars for famine relief in Africa. And here in Los Angeles, a suspect was on the loose. This photo exhibit at the LA Central Library examines the social impact of the infamous Night Stalker case.
Law enforcement as a whole mobilized all over Southern California looking for this guy.
This guy was serial killer Richard Ramirez, the subject of retired LAPD Officer Glenn Martin's new book entitled Satan's Summer in the City of Angels: The Social Impact of the Night Stalker.
And it was a time when nobody thought they were safe. So, yeah, I suppose you could look at it as a reminder, but it's a retrospective on how awful that summer was.
We went from, in 1984, the Olympics where everybody was thrilled, to a year later, and all of a sudden, you know, the whole community is terrorized.
Dean Musgrove, former photographer at the now-defunct LA Herald Examiner and his crew, took many of the photos now in the book, including this one of the East LA neighbors who chased and held Ramirez until the cops arrived. He was eventually convicted of 13 murders, as well as several rapes and burglaries. The photos during this manhunt are now on display at downtown Central Library, which purposely omitted any photos of the killer. Proceeds from the book benefit the library and photo friends of the LA Public Library.
We're all volunteers. We're all people who love Los Angeles' history and photography. And we basically do programming to support the photo collection.
And what a collection! The LA City Library has 120,000 archived photos available.
It's a resource for authors, for the motion picture industry.
We do charge a fee, though, because they do help benefit the photo collection. People can get copies. We make prints. We can do eight-by-ten prints, all the way up to 42-inch prints. So, we can fit a variety of needs. People can go to tessa, T-E-S-S-A, dot L A P L dot org. That is our digital portal.
For writers and documentary filmmakers, it would be criminal if you didn't.
The photo exhibit is on display at the Tom Bradley Wing of the Central Library. Admission is free. For more info, visit lapl.org. It's been 25 years since the Northridge earthquake. Since then, have we become better prepared for the next one? That was the question being asked by Councilmember Bob Blumenfield as he looked back at the devastating earthquake.
Twenty-five years ago, on this very day, a powerful earthquake rocked Southern California and forever altered the lives of so many, including lives lost.
As horrific of an incident as it was, it was a shining day for LA City workers because the city, family, the employees came together and really helped put LA back together again, helped put the valley back together again. There's a lot that we need to do to get ourselves fully prepared. We talked about at this press conference a number of those steps, including the Shake LA app, which everybody should download. You have a ready-set-go bag so that you've got the needed material with you or in your car. Keeping extra cash around. Having a designated location where your family will be a point of contact for your family members. And there's things that people can do as volunteers. We have a great CERT program in LA, which I urge people to be part of, which trains people to be first responders themselves. It's not a question of whether there'll be another earthquake. It's a question of whether it will be a disaster.
Police Chief Michael Moore reaches out to the community in a town hall. A long-awaited pathway to PCH begins to take shape. And community members thank those who helped end the teacher's strike. All this in City B. LAPD Chief Michael Moore held a public safety town hall meeting for the residents of the East San Fernando Valley. The chief addressed public questions and concerns, as well as discussed challenges the LAPD faces looking forward in effectively policing the community.
People involved in violent crime, people who are engaged in thefts and offending on others, this is an area that we're going to make those arrests.
Councilmember Mike Bonnet and the Department of Wrecker Parks broke ground on the long-anticipated Potrero pathway in Pacific Palisades. The path will extend from the hillside to PCH and will offer a variety of ocean views, as well as expanded recreation opportunities along the route. Completion is scheduled for 2020. Mayor Eric Garcetti mediated a successful end to the now-historic Los Angeles teacher's strike. After thousands of teachers and supporters marched in downtown LA, an agreement was reached between the normally contentious school board and teachers' union. Now, this is a special treat. Ever wanted to see your face on a big mural? Well, we caught up with local artists as they capture the real faces and stories of the community. It's all part of a local art show called Heart of Hyde Park, designed to inspire a new generation.
The project is called Heart of Hyde Park for a reason. It's focused on creating a mural for the corner of Slauson and Crenshaw, which is one of the most important intersections in this neighborhood.
By me being, growing up in this community, I felt that I was able to give voice and relate, and really just wanted to be a part of it.
It makes me feel special because I've never really been part of something as big of a mural. My older siblings are jealous, and my younger siblings don't really care.
I actually didn't think I would make it onto a mural before.
The most important element of depicting community members on the mural is that they see themselves in a way that recognizes that they're important. So many times in communities, every man gets overlooked for, you know, people from either outside of the community or people on TV or whatnot. But each person has an important voice and an important talent. So, I think it's just important that we elevate them and depict them in ways that shows how important they are to us.
Our goal is to have them be involved in what seems like an art project, but really is a civic project. Many of the people that we are featuring are those community members who think about how to make this neighborhood a better place.
I really want to create the next public artist in Los Angeles. It's kind of the way that I want to give back to communities, because I can only paint so many murals. But if I create more muralists, then they can create more murals around the city and beautify it.
This could get my name known, because I do want to be a politician. So, people can look back on this and say, hey, wasn't that the kid on the bank in Hyde Park? Wow, that's crazy that he's the president now.
This next story is for the rockers in all of us. Now, I'm having flashbacks of my Prince vinyls. Want a super cool way to spend your next Saturday? Why don't you swing on by the Rock and Roll Flea Market at the Regent Theater for a taste of your favorite music legends, vintage garb, food, drinks, and lots of other sweet swag.
I always told people it's kind of like a party that just happens to sell things. It's vinyl, lots of used vinyl and new vinyl, vintage clothes, but it's kind of skewed to a more music-oriented crowd. We do have little collectibles and some old musical instruments.
This is my first time here. My friend and I are both here. We work in the music industry, and we kind of just decided that we needed a creative outlet. So, we hit the books, and we just started kind of designing stuff that we would like and that we would want to buy, and just kind of turned it into this.
When there's an outlet like this, that's both affordable for us as vendors, but also affordable for, you know, people that want to come in and check things out, it's awesome. We definitely need more of it in the city.
There's music, there's cool people, cool stuff. It's just a lot to see. You can walk around, come here for an hour, shop, and like, just have a really awesome Saturday.
The Rock and Roll Flea Market happens every month at the Regent Theater in downtown LA. You know the drill. Visit rnrflea.com. Learn all about yummy Japanese food, buy a special gift for that special someone at a Valentine's pop-up, and a treat not only for your eyes, but for your taste buds, too. All this and things to do. Your next culinary adventure awaits at the 2019 Japanese Food Expo. Learn about Japanese culture through dozens of workshops and exhibitors, all designed to help you cultivate a love and taste for Japanese foods and spices. An open table awaits at the Japanese Food Expo happening at the Hilton Los Angeles Universal City, located at 555 Universal Hollywood Drive. The expo is on Saturday, February 2nd, from 1:00 to 8:00 p.m. For ticket information, contact expo@jfcusa.org. The Craft Contemporary Shop presents a special Valentine's Day pop-up. This pop-up event at the Craft and Folk Art Museum features locally-made men's accessories from pocket square clothing and handcrafted jewelry curated by RISE Project. Find a meaningful gift that your Valentine will adore for years at the Valentine's Day pop-up from the Craft Contemporary Shop, located at 5814 Wilshire Boulevard. Open Tuesday through Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. For more information, visit info@cafam.org. Get the red carpet treatment at a special screening of Visionaries, the PBS docu-series that highlights humanitarian service to Los Angeles' children in need. The screening and reception commemorates 100 years of service by the Assistance League of Los Angeles. You can check out the special screening of Visionaries on Saturday, February 2nd, starting at 5:00 p.m. The event will take place at Assistance League Theater, located at 1367 North St. Andrews Place. For details, visit assistenteleagela.org. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana K. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next week for more of LA This Week.
As a foster youth, I've come to realize that I had no direction and no sense of way to know who I was going to become. My life was going down the path of not knowing whether to go left or right with being a product of the system because of the stigma and the stereotypes of a foster youth. With the help of the Higher LA Youth Program, I was able to find myself within my career path to lead myself to becoming a certified linguistic interpreter with being also minoring in social work, to be able to help our community and our youths who are in need to continue on with their education, as well as moving forward in life for a better future. My name is Destiny Nuryan, and Higher LA Youth helps me with finding my career path.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. If everyone could please take your seat. Today is February 1st, 2019. We want to welcome you to our City Hall that's located in the Great Valley area. At this point in time, what I would remember suggests that we begin with, because we don't have a quorum, we can begin with the presentation portion of our day. So, I'd like to recognize Ms. Nury Martinez to get us started. Ms. Martinez, the floor is yours. Yeah, give Ms. Martinez a round of applause.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. If I can have our honoree come up? There you are. Where's your daughter? You're both your daughters. I promise you, our members don't bite. They're fine. Good morning, colleagues. I'm really excited to recognize someone really special that has made a significant impact to the community of Van Nuys. This is Officer Anthony Tony Kabunik, who after... Yes. After more than three decades of service, is retiring from the LAPD. He began his career in the department back in November of 1986. He completed his probation here in Van Nuys and then went to go work at Pacific and Southeast Divisions. He returned to the Van Nuys Division back in 1997, and four years later, he was promoted to the senior lead officer. What some of you might not know is that Officer Kabunik was one of the first officers who responded to the famous 1997 North Hollywood shootout. The incident made live national news when two bank robbers entered the Bank of America on Laurel Canyon in North Hollywood with high-capacity rifles and a high-resistance bulletproof vest. Officer Kabunik, with his bravery, courage, and leadership, demonstrated what it means to be an LAPD officer. He risked his life to save others, and his acts of bravery have even been documented and showcased in documentaries and movies. But when you ask him why he never brings this up, he simply responds, "I was just doing my job." You always say that. He's not only a great police officer, but a person of great character. He's not only a great police officer, but a person of great character, humility, and integrity. Since becoming a Senior Lead Officer of Central Van Nuys and portions of the North Sherman Oaks area back in 2001, he has been involved with community and goes above and beyond to help others whenever possible. He's always at all our Van Nuys Business Watch meetings and our Northwest Neighborhood Watch meetings. You will always find it at every single one of these meetings. I don't think you've ever missed one. No. His wife will say no. Yeah, he's always at work. He's providing assistance to my staff and to the countless events that we have here at the Van Nuys Service Center. You will always find Officer Kabunik working those events as well. I want to thank you, my friend, for your commitment to the residents of the city of Los Angeles, but especially to those of the Valley. My staff and I see the passion this man has every single day and how devoted he is to his community and to his job. I want to wish you well in your next chapter of your life. I want to recognize his wife, Rose, and his daughter, Elena, and Lauren, who are here today. Can we please give them a big round of applause? I want to also acknowledge that we have Captain Hearn here from the Van Nuys Police Division and some of his officers who have worked with Officer Kabunik. Can we also give them a big round of applause? They have an amazing police force here in Van Nuys. And Captain Hearn, you are gonna... You are losing a great officer, my friend. You know that, and I think we all know that. But he's decided to retire, and we've got to wish him well. So I want to bring him up to the podium. Can we please give a big round of applause to Officer Tony Kabunik?
All right.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for the kind words. And thank you, Candido.
Did you bring him to cheer you on?
I didn't realize I did bring you, but thank you very much. And first of all, I'd like to thank, of course, Nuri Martinez, their office, their staff. Been great over the years, working together. It's a strong relationship and something that we need to keep for our community. Also, thank you, the board, as far as the council members overseeing and overseeing the men and women of this department, the police officers that go day in and day out and do the same job that I do. I'd like to also thank my wife, Rose. She's been there. She's been my partner for those 32 years. Along with my daughters, Elena and Lauren, who have also stuck through and been there on my long nights. So, thank you very much. And the men and women behind me, of course, with Captain Hearn. You always need a captain to kind of run the show, and he's been a great mentor. Along with my staff, my partners, my co-partners, Mike Perez, Jose Saldana, and of course, my Sergeant, Maria Pedroza. So I'd like to thank them as well. Last but not least, and probably somebody who's kind of kept me true to the law and what I should do out there, and always been out there with the advice. And that's my Neighborhood Prosecutor, City Attorney, Tamara Galton.
Yeah.
So again, I'd like to thank everybody for this, for this moment. I am humbled and honored, and I appreciate all the time that I've done with this department in giving back, and also the community members who are here in support. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Officer Kabunik. We want to thank you on behalf of the families of Council District 6 and the city of Los Angeles. We recognize you for your 32 years of outstanding service to LAPD. Thank you. Do you want to do this? Drop it a little bit? Oh, drop it. Drop it, Officer. Okay, now move. Move that way. Okay. Everybody. The girl, come on in. A little short. Okay. There we go. Yeah. Is there anything there? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Okay, why don't we go through the agenda at this point? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? We have a quorum.
Bloomingfield, Bonden, Buscainos, Sidio, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson. Twelve members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Bloomingfield moves. Coretts seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Rodriguez moves, and Krikorian seconds, next.
Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on this item.
Then let's continue.
Items 2 through 5 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request to hold item 2.
Let's hold 2, and let's take action on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve votes.
That brings us where?
Items 6 through 10 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Please note that item 8 requires a technical correction to clarify that the committee change is effective upon adoption of the motion. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Mr. Smith?
If you would, I'd like to receive file number 7. LAPD got the guy, so we no longer need the moron motion.
Okay, so let's do that on that item, Madam Clerk. So ordered, without objection. All right, that brings us where?
And, Mr. President, there are cards on all those items.
Okay, then we'll continue.
And, Mr. President, that then takes council back to presentations, items called special or general public comment.
I would like to recognize Mr. Bloomingfield, if I might, at this time for a presentation.
Good morning. We're here today going to honor the Charlotte Rose Bond for her unique contribution to the community of Tarzana. Now, Charlotte is not with us right here today. She is battling stage IV pancreatic cancer, and she can't be with us in person. But she is watching on Channel 35 right now, so everybody wave to Charlotte.
And let's give her a round of applause. Hi, Charlotte.
I want to welcome who is here today, which is Charlotte's sister, Jean, and her husband, Jerry. They're here to accept this recognition on Charlotte's behalf. Charlotte's son, Rory, who is also watching at home with her mom, reached out to my office last year to find a way to finally get recognition for his mother, for her role in creating the iconic Snoopy Bridge leading to the Tarzana Elementary School over Wilbur Avenue just north of the 101 freeway. Now, for anyone in the West Valley or anyone who's driven through the West Valley, you've seen this Snoopy Bridge. It brings you a smile when you go by, and people always wonder, "How did that come to be? How do we get the rights to the Snoopy characters to be on our iconic bridge?" You know, and what's the story behind this? Well, for more than 40 years, this bridge, this iconic bridge that has brought all those smiles, has only ever been credited to an anonymous PTA member. Well, today, we're going to reveal the real story, and that's why we're honoring Charlotte. She has a long history, I should say Charlotte does, of public service. She was in the Marines, the federal government, the Los Angeles Veterans Hospital, the National Park Service. She and her husband, Ronald Tampaw, and also a fellow Marine, raised three sons, 12 grandchildren, and 13 great-grandchildren. When Charlotte's children, Rory, Rob, Ross, and Tampaw attended Tarzana Elementary School, she spent eight years as an active member of the PTA. She had the responsibility of putting together the newsletter, and one night, when her children were watching a Charlie Brown cartoon, she decided to doodle the Peanuts gang on the page of her newsletter. And for the next newsletter, she got her husband, Ron Tampaw, who she says is the better artist in the family, to draw the characters instead. And they did this for several years, and people really enjoyed it, and they got to know it, and it became associated with the school and the newsletter. And then one day, Charles Schultz, the creator of the comic characters, walked into a nearby Gelson's where Ron worked as a meat cutter. And he was getting... As he was getting his order, Ron didn't waste the opportunity. He approached Mr. Schultz and told him all about what they do on the newsletter, and Mr. Schultz did not turn around and say, "Okay, I'm suing you because you're using my characters." Instead, he was really friendly about it. He loved the idea, loved the association with the school, and he got to know the family. And then, after the pedestrian bridge was built in 1971, Charlotte knew what to do. She contacted Mr. Schultz and asked him for permission to put the characters on the bridge that she wanted. And with the conditions that the sign... You know, he agreed to it with the condition that it not be temporary, but that the sign be made to last. And last, it has, for all these years. Two of the drawings there now were even done by her husband, Ron. Now, that Wilbur Avenue Bridge, better known to all as the Snoopy Bridge, welcomes students and neighbors alike as a mascot for the school and the community. For that, and the joy that you, Charlotte, have brought so many generations of children and people, and for all that you've done for our community, Charlotte... Where's the camera? I want to look right into the camera. Charlotte, this is for you. Congratulations, and we honor you today. Thank you, Charlotte. And I'm going to give it to your sister to accept.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm very honored to accept this for my sister. I know that she's... I'm very honored to accept this for my sister, Charlotte. She's sorry she wasn't able to be here. I know that she is very appreciative that after all these years, she's been noticed of doing these things for the school. Thank you so much.
Great.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bloomingfield, would you be prepared to roll into your next presentation at this time?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. President. For the next one, let's... We could bring up all my golfers in Cleveland, folks. All right, yeah, come on in here. Pretend like this is the last hole on the green. All right. Cleveland's 2018 girls' golf team had an amazing season. Cleveland won its second straight L.A. City section title with a score of 430, beating out second-place Granada Hills by 28 strokes. Sorry, Mr. Smith, where is he? Beat your team out. He's not listening, but that's okay. The Cavaliers have dominated their competition the past two seasons, boasting a combined 11-1 West Valley League record. Led by Captains Ry Howe and Megan Lee, the team won the CIF L.A. Section Championship for a second year in a row. At L.A. City Finals, Megan Lee placed... Came in second place. Jesse Lee placed 6th, and Ry placed 7th. All these folks, these amazing athletes, are standing behind me as I tell you what they did.
Let's give them a round of applause.
Now, Ry was also named as the champion of honor and the character for all of the girls' golf by the CIF L.A. Section. The Cleveland's golf team was undefeated in the CIF L.A. City Section, which included a 6-0 West Valley League record. This was the first in the school's history, I should say. Megan Lee was the West Valley League's most valuable player, and additionally, Cleveland won the West Valley League Tournament. Now, all my colleagues are jealous because we have such an amazing team here. So Coach Lori Howe has coached the girls' golf team for three years and is proudest of the girls for displaying sportsmanship. Throughout the season, many coaches have commented on their positive attitudes, their friendly demeanor, and Coach Lori Howe was also last year's Daily News Golf Coach of the Year and is a high school guidance counselor as well, who understands the importance not just of the game, but of the mental health aspect of the game. And that's where she really makes her impact. That's why the team, not only, when you see them practicing on the golf course, they also take breaks and they do a little yoga in between, I hear, to relieve the anxiety. You all remember Bill Murray, you know, "B the ball, C the ball." They have that mental peace where they can make it happen, because golf is up here as much as it is with the stroke. The yoga paid off because of the back-to-back champions, so I say namaste. They really do live up to the L.A. CIF slogan, "Pursuing Victory with Honor." Let's give them all another round of applause and give you guys this certificate. And, Coach, do you want to say?
I'd like to press the principal.
Okay. And we have the principal to say a few words.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. Good morning. On behalf of Grover Cleveland Charter High School, we would like to thank our council member for inviting us here today. We appreciate your support for our school community, and we are humbled by this recognition for our girls' golf team. It's been an exciting two years for our Lady Cavaliers, as we call our female athletes. Annabelle Guere, Kirsten Shaw, Ry Howe, J.C. Lee, Megan Lee, Stephanie Lee Hay, Lucy Messias, and Giselle Navarrete. Our council members already spoken about some of our achievements, but while we are incredibly proud of their athleticism, what we really admire about our Lady Cavaliers is their commitment to academic excellence off the green. They are the epitome of scholar-athletes. All of our golfers are enrolled in a rigorous program of study at Cleveland, whether it's our Humanities Magnet or our School for Advanced Studies. And they balance those golf practices, all their extracurriculars, with a series of honors and AP classes. And moreover, what sets our girls apart from other teams is their positive upbeat attitude and their team camaraderie. They really like each other. And while they're really competitive and enjoy winning, because as we know, who doesn't enjoy winning? They're more excited when they're at these golf petitions to meet up with their friends at other teams, and they celebrate not only the success of their own team here at Cleveland, but the achievements of all women athletes, and truly demonstrate that the future is female. So, thank you.
Please.
In fact, the young lady that I'm pointing to in the front, come on up.
Oh, no.
What's your name?
I'm Annabelle.
And Anna, how long have you been on the team?
I'm actually... This is my first year. I'm a freshman.
Okay, now, so that I can embarrass myself, I want to ask you, how long do you drive the ball? About how long?
We need J.C. for that one. Yeah.
About...
J.C.?
What would you say?
Like...
Ballpark.
Like 180 yards was probably like my longest.
And you're like in the ninth grade, okay? Let me get another one.
It depends, like on... Normally, it's like 260, but on a good day, it's like 280.
And what grade are you in?
Oh, 10th grade.
260. Jeez, Louise.
She outhits guys at the driving range regularly.
Wait, let me get somebody else my height.
My name's Megan.
In fact, everybody just come up. Give us your name and tell me, how long do you drive the ball? What's your name?
My name's Megan, and I drive about 250.
And what grade?
I'm 11th grade.
Next.
My name's Bob. I drive about 50 yards.
Next, next. I want everybody to get on camera. Come on. Your name?
My name is Giselle, and I'm normally about, what, 220? Like 220.
And what grade?
I'm in 10th grade.
Keep coming. Just humiliate me. Just keep coming.
Yeah, about 220, 30.
Hi, I'm Ry. I drive about 220, but I think that golf is all about the short game rather than how far you drive.
And you're right. You're absolutely correct. I want... Who else? I want everybody to see everybody's face. I couldn't come up with a putting question. So, your name, what grade, and your drive?
Hi, my name is Stephanie. I'm a sophomore, and my drive is normally around 200 yards.
Okay. Did anybody else?
We'll get one more.
Hi, Amy. My name is Kirsten. I'm a junior. I think I would drive like 182.
All right. Yeah, that's my range when I get it good, all right? Anyway, give them a round of applause. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President.
And did all of them speak? Did you all introduce yourselves? Being a champion is really something, so congratulations. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you. So I want to congratulate you ladies for not just your success on the greens. My kids are both... My daughter is currently attending Cleveland and is in the Humanities, the core program, and my son just graduated last year from the SAS. And, you know, you were absolutely right that you created Principal Yoon, an incredible academic environment. You've got an outstanding group of teachers on that campus that are wholly dedicated to making sure that our kids have the greatest opportunities. And so I want to congratulate you all for representing the very best of what your campus is. It's an outstanding school. It's an outstanding school and we're all proud of you, so congratulations.
See you next year. Okay, let me recognize Ms. Martinez. Mr. Spindler, no special effects. This is a warning, you're disrupting the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm excited to wear red in honor of the American Heart Association goal, Red for Women Day, a movement that works tirelessly to end cardiovascular disease in women. For 15 years ago, Red for Women has provided a platform for women to come together, raise awareness, fund fundraising research, and advocate for change because sadly cardiovascular disease continues to be women's greatest health threat, claiming lives of one out of three women. I am proud to support the American Heart Association this morning and raise awareness for this movement. I'm joined here today by some amazing advocates that work tirelessly to get this message across our city. Some are survivors of this disease. By making a commitment to stand with the American Heart Association, Go Red for Women movement, people everywhere are coming together to take action to end stroke and heart disease in women in particular. I am invited here today by some amazing women that you're going to hear from this morning. But some of the things you can do to take action, to raise awareness, is ask your doctor to check your blood pressure, your cholesterol, and your blood sugar. Own your lifestyle. Be active and practice good habits. Donate your time to this movement. We can always use more people to help advocate and spread awareness about cardiovascular disease. And more importantly, be an advocate for other women-related research and education. Heart disease continues to make, I'm sorry, heart disease takes more lives than actual cancer combined with women who are actually affected by cardiovascular disease. Like I mentioned, one out of three women are affected. I'd like to invite Jaclyn Akalani to the podium. I know she's here, Jaclyn. She is a heart and stroke survivor and a longtime cardiovascular patient advocate. Welcome to the podium, my friend.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Martinez, for that very nice introduction. And good morning and happy American Heart Month to everyone. And it's on behalf of the entire American Heart Association and all of my fellow volunteer colleagues and staff leader members at the American Heart Association, a very special thank you to the entire L.A. City Council for taking the lead and helping to improve patients' clinic care for all heart patients and all patients in general in Los Angeles. I think we are a great model for that across the country. And I feel so lucky to be a citizen here in L.A. And especially because I just got back from Washington, D.C. for getting a Patient Advocate Award and it was four degrees. And I'm really, it warms my heart to be here today in more ways than one.
Oh, my God, yes.
It was cold, okay? So, you know, heart disease is still the number one killer and we can do better. And the great news is, like our city council member mentioned, is that we all have the power as individuals and collectively as a community to help change the devastating statistics about heart disease because it kills and disables more men, women, and children than any other problem, any other medical problem. And so we have to keep working at it because, you know, I don't want to sound cliche, but it really does take a village. We can't say that enough. We have to work harder to improve care for all patients and heart patients and help, work to help increase awareness and education and research to improve patients' clinic care across the board. And I know about this problem personally because I am a heart and stroke survivor and I also...
Bless you.
...there are different types of heart disease, as you may know. That's why research is really important. And that's why the American Heart Association is so committed to working hard to help us with these issues. And I have a rare condition that's been diagnosed in only about 1 in 17 million people. So I'm in the lucky-to-be-alive club. So that's why I've dedicated my second chance in life to helping to use my medical experience and story to help improve care for all patients and especially heart patients. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kocorian, did you want to speak? No. Okay, Ms. Martinez. Thank you again, just thank you.
Please give Jaclyn another big round of applause.
Just give her a big round of applause.
Thank you very much for everything that you do. And on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and Council District 6, it's my pleasure to recognize the American Heart Association. Amanda, where are you? In promoting cardiovascular disease in women through Going Red Today. So I encourage everyone to Go Red for Cardiovascular Awareness Month. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In fact, before we start, members, some of you may have seen that there was a video sent to me from the council president of the City of Boston, President Campbell, challenging or betting on the Sunday Super Bowl game. I gladly accepted the challenge, saying, "Go Rams," and I believe on Sunday we will be victorious. So I want all Rams fans to cheer mightily because I don't want to come here next Tuesday and have to wear a Patriots jersey. Other members of the city council in Boston suggested that the entire council participate. And I was ready to say, "Yes, we will," then I thought about Mr. Kocorian, who already said, "Oh, no," that he would strangle me if I... So we just have to win, members. And also, they'll be sending us some Dunkin', special chocolates, some coffee, and I can't remember what else. And shaving kits. And if we lose, we send them Sees candies. We coffee bean and tea leaf. And wine from the San Antonio Winery. So I just wanted all L.A. fans to make sure that you, you know, cheer long and hard. All right. With that said, let's take up item two.
And, Mr. President, on item two, amending motion 2C has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, so let's refer amending motion 2B to committee and adopt amending motion 2C. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
To our eyes.
All right. So now maybe we'll get some general public comment. I want Fanny, Anne Flanders, and John. Stephen Nasinski, come on up. Rose Wright, this is one minute. Just come on up and identify yourself and welcome to Van Nuys. In fact, before you start, let me recognize the city attorney for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've made this announcement in City Hall in downtown, but as our first meeting in Van Nuys, I'd like to take a moment to remind everyone and the audience of some new council and committee rules that have come into effect. The new rules state that a member of the audience who disrupts multiple council or committee meetings may be excluded from future meetings for one or more days. The number of days increases with the number of disruptions. The exact rules are available on the city's website and a summary of the rules is on a large poster board by the kiosk on the side of the room. The new rules do not address the content of speakers' remarks. Instead, the rules are designed to prevent repeated actual disruptions of council and committee meetings. Our hope is that the new rules will help the council and committee meetings run more efficiently to complete the city's business and to allow as many members of the public as possible to present their comments to their elected representatives in an orderly manner. Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to read that into the record.
Thank you for reminding me. Yes, identify yourself and welcome.
Good morning. My name is Anne Flanders and I'm here today to share with you that I'm part of one of the 400 many Airbnb Plus homes that are in the San Fernando Valley that offer experience for the travelers who choose a personal, customized experience for the price of a cheap motel in a bad neighborhood. We have one room that we share in our home and many of those travelers that stay with us, they stay because they can't afford those luxurious pricey hotel. In our case, we've hosted in the last year 90 guests from 25 different countries. I'm part of Binome. My husband will speak about another aspect. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. So John, welcome.
Yes, hi, John Flanders. Thanks so much for having me here. I just wanted you into consideration for the ordinance as you look at the details, to consider primary home providers as separate from the commercial providers. One of the reasons that we do this is it allows us to live in this area. We moved back from Belgium where we spent 15 years raising our kids a year and a half ago and we run Airbnb to help us afford to live here. And most of the Airbnb Plus, which are the primary home providers, are doing the same thing. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, please come. I think that's Stephen. Good to see you, sir.
Good man. Good morning. My name is Stephen Nasinski. I live in CD3. I am a host in home sharing. And I wanted to just congratulate Bob Bloomingfeld for having helped pass what's a really powerful ordinance. And I wanted to make a point that even though it was passed, there's a number of details that are still being ironed out. And Bob was particularly responsive to the issue that we believe that hardship qualifications need to be addressed for people like permanently disabled status, that they're currently receiving government assistance, and people who are home sharing that have lost a husband or wife. So I wanted to just ask the council to not forget that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Corretts?
On the record, especially in light of what the city attorney mentioned, Mr. Herman came in bleeding like a goat during the Heart Association presentation and has since been wildly waving papers trying to distract. And he has been quite distracting during people's testimony.
Okay, Mr. Herman, you've already been warned twice. So, no, you've already been warned twice. So remove him from the meeting, Sergeant. No, Mr. Herman, just, you've already come in disrupting the meeting and we're asking you to leave.
And now, Mr. Herman is continuing to disrupt the meeting by shouting from the audience. I believe Mr. Herman's been ordered to be removed quietly, so he should go. And he's still shouting from the audience.
Continuing to disrupt the, continuing to disrupt our meeting. Okay, please have him removed. And sorry you had to listen to that, okay? The floor is yours.
Good morning, council. My name is Fanny Long. I'm from the 7th District. And I'm just wondering, we met with you last year in regards to the proposed water tank on Hanson Hills. I'm here this morning hoping you have decided to cancel it rather than postpone it. And so I'm looking forward to the canceling of that water tank on Hanson Hills. Also, I'd like to also address if, in fact, we're going to reinstate the strike team because often our neighborhoods get so, just a lot of junk around our neighborhoods. We do call the 311 to have the major stuff picked up, but we're looking for the re-establishment of the strike team, council lady. We like, appreciate you do that for us. And so I'd like to yield the rest of my time, if I have it, to Beverly Miller.
Well, no, we'll give Ms. Miller, you get your own time, Ms. Miller. But that was sweet of you, Fanny. Ms. Miller, come on, you have your, you have your own. Take your time. Take your time. Welcome. Go ahead.
My name is Rose Wright Jacob and I work with the homeless around America. And I find a lot of things that's really going on with the homeless is really congregating around the business places. And I think the business owners have much responsibility protect and serve the police and the homeless and the mentally ill by not allowing them to congregate. Our kids can congregate on the street, they say they're gang-banging. So why should we let the homeless and all the people, dope dealers, all them tossing up in our neighborhood when the 7-Eleven is a problem in my neighborhood? 7-Eleven, wherever you go, a business open up, 7-Eleven open up. And then we got to have police all around 7-Eleven because that's where all the homeless and all the hotspots are. So I'm saying now, we should bow down on the homeowners, on these vendors that's selling. They go around there like they're buying stuff. They're not buying nothing, they're selling stuff. So right now, protect and serve our offices. I work with Big Teddy Bear Arms.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. All right, so did we get Lena? Ivazan? Ana Maria Camacho? Yeah, identify. Yes, ma'am. I'm calling people after you. Okay. No, 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 you go on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You identify yourself. No, I just want to keep the line moving, so go on.
All right, thank you. My name is Beverly Miller and today I am an advocate for the seniors. For years, I have worked in the youth department, but last year I officially declared myself as a senior. And I'm here today as an advocate for the Alicia Bradas Duncan multipurpose senior citizen building located in 113 Glen Oaks Boulevard in Poughkeepsie, California. And I'm here because we would like to see an upgrade in our senior citizen building. We need handicap plates to open the doors. The doors are very heavy. We have handicapped people standing there with, holding the doors open. We'd also like to see the bathroom stalls enlarged with higher toilet seats for people that have hip and knee problems to be able to use the bathroom more comfortably. And also some rails put in there so they could pull themselves up and down from the toilet seat. We would also like to see a computer room put in there and also a sliding door in the front gate to open and close the gate for the seniors. So thank you very much.
You are so welcome. And again, Lena, did Rose Wright come up yet? Kiko Ellsworth?
Yes, she did.
Yes, ma'am. Identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Lena. I'd like to start off with Paradise City, California. We know it burned down. About 20,000 folks had to go into the Chico City area. Chico City area has serious issues with fire department, L.A., I'm sorry, police departments, schooling, hospitals, et cetera. Here in Woodland Hills, there is the Warner Center. Warner Center is having approximately 10,200 apartments, which would run approximately 30,000 folks or so if you calculate about three per home. In any event, that is within about two-mile radius being constructed at this time. When asked developers, "Where is police departments, new police departments to accommodate?" When asked, "Where's new fire departments to accommodate, new schools to accommodate?" Crickets. crickets? When asked where's the infrastructure to build, the streets, the traffic, crickets? Their turn is, and their response is, we've given to the city and the city's has not...
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, welcome.
Good morning, sir. My name is Anna Maria Camacho, and my residence is in Tarzana. And I'm here about the recent short-term rental ordinance. We are concerned of the 120 days that is unreasonable with only one booking at a time. My house, I had three bedrooms and usually have two rooms that I rented, and if I only get to confide to one room and they pay over $3,000, I'm not going to be able to stay in my house if these rules and regulations are so high for us. We love Los Angeles, my kids grow up here, and I'd rather to stick over here in LA where I know. But with these regulations and high fees, I'm not going to be able to do it. I really want you to put your hearts, your hands on your hearts for the people like me. I'm 64, my husband is 69, and with the social security, we're not able to keep, we need this income to keep us working. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Greetings and great rising. Greetings and great rising. My name is Kiko Ellsworth, Airbnb host, a lot of community work, community activist, public speaker, vice president of a domestic violence organization, teacher, father, all that good stuff. The ordinance that was passed, I understand that it's, it makes it very difficult for Airbnb hosts to actually thrive with the fees and the limitation. And it's my understanding that you want to be able to create it in a way so that the Airbnb hosts and the community can work together to thrive. So I ask you to revisit that and to consider opening up that 120 days to expand that and to reduce that 800 fee to be much less than that. Thank you.
Thank you. So, at this time, let me call Eric Previn. He'll get three minutes and what? Mr. Previn has items one, six, seven, eight, nine, then his general public comment. Yes, Mr. Previn?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, but just a quick clarification, you materially changed item two, so will you be opening that up for comment?
Mr. Previn, you get to speak on the items that I read you, items one, six, seven, eight, and nine. Mr. Previn, go ahead.
I believe that, I believe that you materially changed it, so I feel that that's a violation, item two. I'll go on to item, I think you said the one that, well, the one that I think people are very interested in, sir, has to do with the street banners, because it's a way of getting outreach to the community. And, you know, the ultimate form of civic engagement is local neighborhood councils...
Mr. Previn, I don't think there's a street vendor item on the agenda.
Mr. Previn?
Again, you keep taking my time up with Fabel not being able to follow along. That's not appropriate. Give me back 15 or 20 seconds, sir.
Mr. Previn, go on.
Wow, I'm really upset. Okay, well, I can just simply say that the motion B, which was the Rue Amendment, Sherman Oaks BID, to the item where Bonin is going to make $50,000 available for just a few business improvement districts to take the special parking revenue from the meters and apply it locally. So I think it's a nice idea. The only thing that's kind of missing is the transparency about are they in, are they out, and why was our BID not considered? John Walker, the great chair, I think he's actually stepping down recently, he's on your Innovation Committee directly, refresh your memory. But, I don't know. And speaking of committees, sir, thank you so much, by the way, and thanks to the LAPD for finally bringing public meeting agendas back to our public meetings. This is a great victory.
Okay, again, we're not on the item.
Okay, no, I'm on the item about the new, sir, you should know this because it's hard to follow, there's an information technology and hashtag Blooming Fields knows committee that's just been started, and they're meeting, and here's my point, if you could make an e-blast to the whole community about the new committee assignments, because we're getting a little confused, there's a lot of new groovy committees, we want to be a part of it, but we have no idea when they meet, and that is a big problem. Now, since we got Krikorian chuckling along, I want to just bring up how appreciative we are of the mobile pit stop program that I know O'Farrell and many others have rolled out in the city. We've asked our council district member to come along with neighborhood councils...
Again, I don't think you're on the agenda.
Okay, let's give Mr. Previn his one minute of general public comment.
Let's vote Previn out in the neighborhood council, so let's do that.
Give him his one minute, general public comment.
No, no, you're not going to take up my time, sir, I'm on point.
Mr. Previn, go ahead.
Wow, okay, very, very bad. Okay, so, you know, in the spirit of negotiation, our neighborhood council all voted together to clean up our neighborhood council's way of voting. It's called the 10-5 pilot program. I spoke about it with, I spoke about it with a few of you, it's a great idea. Nick Greif was like, I love this. And yet, Rue's not here today. But, the problem is, is that the mayor has been so busy, and we've had to, he's been brokering a piece with the Capodolo Group and UTLA and everything, so our little standoff has kind of landed on the desk of poor Janice Hahn and others. We just want to move forward, and our whole neighborhood's kind of like, are you kidding? You're going to send them back into the lawsuit and the, and the LA Times articles and all of the terrible things? So we're hoping that Mayor Garcetti, now that he's back and focused, he's got the new puffy-down jacket with the mayor logo, we're ready, we're ready to have a little bit of support. So if there's any way that you could raise your voice, I know you love the neighborhood councils, nobody loves the neighborhood councils more than you and David Rue that I can think of, other than Mayor Garcetti and obviously Mr. Fabel, he is a big fan of the neighborhood councils as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. So, is there Linda Allison, Kathy Ward, Watt, come forward? Identify yourself.
I'm Linda Allison. I'm native of the San Fernando Valley, turning 70 years old next month, and I'm here about the recent Airbnb or short-term rental ordinance that was passed. I would like consideration to relook at that as far as the number of days that it's limited to and the number of rentals in one house. I spent 22 years repairing my house from the earthquake that we just recently had the anniversary of, and it's those funds that are helping me still repair my house to this day. I was able to finally put a new roof on my house after all these years, and with it being limited, that will really, really force me to have to leave in my retirement years and not live in a house that I've been in for 37 years. Thank you, and I re, would really appreciate reconsidering the length of time and the number of rentals in one home.
Thank you for coming. Next speaker, please come and identify yourself.
My name is Kathy Wood. I'm an Airbnb host. I've never spoken...
Just relax.
I live in Sherwood Forest, Northridge. I have, I'm not really in this for the money, but I have a large place, I have a poolhouse, a studio. I currently have a lovely Chinese family staying with me, and a couple from Lithuania in my studio. I have fun with my guests. I think Airbnb is great. I think it's healthy for our city. I think it's healthy for my community. I think it's great for human relations. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Okay, let me call Ms... Ms. Fogler? You have items one, seven, and the general public comment, so give her two minutes, and then her one minute for general public comment.
Well, don't I get two minutes on each, so it would be five, wouldn't it? Mr. President?
Go ahead.
So that's two minutes on each, okay?
No, you have one item, you have one minute on item one and one minute on item seven, and then you have your general public comment.
Oh, really? I thought it used to be two minutes.
No, it's one minute. Go ahead.
Oh, wow, I guess the minutes have been cut down to one minute. Okay, that's, that's what you call democracy, that's what's happening here.
Stay, stay on the item.
Okay, what I'm just saying is, number one, I guess is regarding the awards, or is it the housing? Okay, the housing is number, number one. I think that we have to make sure that the money that are being allocated should be helping our vets, should be helping our seniors and our disabled, and you, and they should all be US citizens only. So, cannot go to illegal aliens that I don't want to be supporting in our country. Okay, I don't mind if we help them in our country, if we have to, we'll help them, but they need to help themselves. God says, God says he'll help those that help themselves. Okay? So, the housing is especially for only Americans, American citizens only, and the homeless too. So...
Item seven?
Yeah, thank you, I'm done on that one. Seven is the award for people to turn in someone for an item, and I think it is a waste of time, because I don't think people are going to be that cooperative, because there fear of retaliation. So it's really not a very good idea. Yeah, it's kind of sad when you, when you realize how, how people don't trust one another anymore, because we got so many bad people coming into our country.
Okay, let's give her her minute for general public comment. Now you can speak to whatever you'd like.
Okay, okay, you know, Newsom yesterday went to San Diego to help the San Diego response, rapid response folks, $25 million, to help nonprofits to bring in the illegal aliens so they, they can usurp our country and go in, and they put these things on their legs, they, they, once they are gone, they take them off, they never come back for their asylum hearing. They're gone for good, ladies and gentlemen. And your money is being spent to bring in catch and release illegal aliens, and President Trump is doing all he can, and yet they're bringing them in, and they don't, they go over the wall or under the wall, that's how they're doing, and we need to enforce the illegal, the immigration laws, period. I say just put them back on the other side and leave them there and wait till they're ready to, until their time is here, because they have to come in legally, if they want to come in, come in the right way, not come in the wrong way.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Candido?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
Please come forward. You put on, you put in on cards that, that did...
One, two, and public comments, sir.
You have one, you can speak on one, and seven, I believe, and six, so go ahead.
And public comments, sir?
Yes, and public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President, for your kindness. First of all, you know, this is Christmas early. I mean, when you can come to this council, and I have the honor of seeing a great man like Mr. Gray Smith return to represent our 12th district, thank you, sir. And I don't care what, you are one of the best individuals...
Okay, you got to get on the subject. Candido, you got to get on the subject.
All right, you want to talk about housing? Well, since this young lady made comments about all the illegals, you know, this country has been, has been good to everyone, and you know what? Some people make it and some don't, but you make, may I speak?
No, wait a minute, Ms. Fogler, you can't, wait, hold, hold his time. This is Candido's time. So he gets to speak, there'll be no other comments. When you guys spoke... No, Miriam, you're disrupting the meeting. You already had your time. This is his time. Go ahead.
Mr., quote the Bible, God says forgiveness is within all our hearts.
Let's get back to the item.
So, I would ask Miriam to forgive.
Let's get back to the item.
And again, housing, housing is an issue that, a serious problem that we have in this, this city and the state, but I think we can, and if people are willing to work for it, I think that is the main thing. If you're willing to come to this country, if you're willing to sacrifice, oh yeah, Miriam, your history and your family, I would be a little disappointed if I read it here, I did do some research on you. But again, I think we all have that opportunity, we should give that opportunity of people. Can you imagine what it takes to get to this country? I came from Pueblo, Colorado, $40 in my pocket with nothing, and it was for the kindness of people who gave me housing so that I would have somewhere to place. My family goes back to 1598, Miriam.
Get back on the item.
Miriam, do you know where 1598 was?
Candido, what? Get back on the item, or I'm going to have to just go straight to general public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President, but again, when you hear people spreading hatred, when we should be spreading love and kindness and...
And I, I got you, but this, why don't we just play it safe? Give him his one minute for general public comment, and you can just roll.
Thank you, and I apologize, it's just sometimes frustrating, but here we go. In regards to Tony Kabutnik, he was the officer that was honored today, he is truly a cop's cop, but he was also a community cop. This gentleman one time was confronted by the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, one of the board members who made a false statement against somebody else, and Mr. Kabutnik did the right thing and said, nope, that didn't happen, and stood up for what was right. That was just one of the examples of Mr. Kabutnik, he was an unbelievable, unbelievable officer. I also want to talk about Mr. Val Pantasea, and those of you who remember him, he was a commander. Do you know what he does today? He's over at the food bank, and every week he is there and he's packing food for those who are in need. Can you imagine that? A commander. He should be utilized by this city council for other things, like, he was one of the first with the Jeopardy program. Can you imagine if we could use that, all that knowledge and all that goodness? And again, that man has a heart of gold, and people think that officers don't have it, but officers...
Thank you. Thank you, Candido. I'd like to now call up Donna Pierman. You have items one, you have items one, seven, and general public comment. Go ahead.
Well, first of all, I wanted to tell you that Donna Pierman can make it, so, I locked her in the elephant in the bathroom, so that, no, I'm Eric Garcetti, so I like to speak about number one.
Let's get on the comment. Donna, get on, get on the issue.
I want to speak on one.
You got number one.
Say, $23 million are spent, so that would be wonderful for the people in the caravan. So I think that we should have this only for, well, it seems to me that that's the way we're going. We're going to have only the caravan people and illegal aliens, be sure to have them in the $23 million housing, so, you know, so make sure you don't have any veterans, make sure you don't have any American citizens, because somebody, somebody had to put them somewhere, if he allowed all these people to come in, of course, we're going to have to let them come in, we're going to have to give that housing over for the 23 million. I think that sounds, I've got a great idea, Garcetti and all the Democrats love it. Thank you. And do I go on to number seven?
Item seven?
Okay, seven, oh, I really don't think that anybody is going to really, they could get killed by these people that said, well, I did the bank robbery, and if you put them over there, they can get themselves killed, so I don't think that that really is going to do that. Of course, I think the Democrats steal our money too, so, they're in a sense our bank robbers also, so...
Stay on the subject.
So anyway, I don't believe in that one, so...
Well, we give her her general public comment, one minute.
Okay, so, I've had some great ideas, can we go on to a minute? Okay, anyway, I think we have some great ideas. I think we, way we're going, maybe we should have 15% sales tax, doesn't that sound like a great idea? I'm sure the Democrats would love that. And over there, we could also have a 15% more on property taxes, 15% more on state tax, 15% more on federal tax, because somehow we have to pay for all these people that are coming on in. I mean, given their free education, their free housing, their tons of food, their free schooling, somebody has, how, how do we pay for it? So I think the Democrats and Garcetti and Newsom, oh, Newsom would love that, be able to tax us up to the moon, and of course, we owe an honest partial birth abortion, we get rid of American citizens that way, so that we'll have more money that way to pay for all the people in the caravan. So I think that's a great idea. 15% more, yay! Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Spindler, you have items one, six, seven, eight, and nine, and general public comment.
That's right. So that's why today we get on to number one. The CD2, this Paul the Goat Krikorian, bah, and what he doing, he want $23 million of money from CD1 to give it to his district for rehabilitation of multifamily housing. Now, I recorded at the Studio City Neighborhood Council, one of my black sisters tried to get one of them apartments, they be denying it because she black. That's right, because in the CD2, they are retaliating against black folks getting those apartments on those Tefra-funded housing multi-unit projects, yes. And now you motherfuckers trying to give them 23 more million dollars to violate my civil rights. And that's why Paul Krikorian and Paul Corret just get up and put his fat ass back there, because I am here for the black community.
Stay on the subject, stay on the subject.
That's right. Now we gets to number seven. Snitches get... Now, we gets to number seven, snitches get stitches. Now, as you see with modern technology, I can read the comments of the great speaker and civil rights advocate, Armando Herman. Fuck you, Herb, by number seven. Yes, sir.
Look, you're not, you are not on topic, that's your last warning.
That, that, I, I talking to number seven about snitches getting stitches, and that's why, that's why Greg Smith, he got that pulled, and the reason he got it pulled is because he knows that you were gonna run an ad over there in that newspaper owned by your buddy over there at the Watts Times, so what Mr. Smith did is he pulled the money back, he saved the city money on a fraudulent reward. Good job by the Smithmeister. Now, we getting to number ten, we got some map.
You're not on ten.
Uh, I'm on ten now, right, fool? Yeah. Number ten is a map in CD twelve. Now, before we came here today, I talked to Greg Smith briefly, I also talked to the lead FBI agent, and we worked it all out, so we gonna support the approval of one-two-one-three-zero North Nugget Drive, all for Louise, but we're gonna waive all the fees for the developer, so he ain't gonna get charged eight thousand seven hundred twenty dollars. What he gonna do is, he gonna pay it, and Greg Smith gonna deliver the money cash back to the developer in a plastic bag with the concession of the FBI. This is what we're doing, Herb, we're getting Greg Smith on board, he helping the FBI, he helping the developers that are honest, like our number ten, and we gonna start cleaning this shit up and getting refunds for the developers who gave you that stolen money, nigger.
Let's give, let's give him, let's give him, uh, his one minute for general public comment.
See, you guys got set up. The whole thing with Armando Herman was a setup. He come in here earlier, he didn't get a legitimate warning, he come out, he get back through, and sure enough, Paul Cor, 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 and I'm sorry, I get them two motherfuckers confused, they both white, see? So, Paul Corretts, he get up and he say to throw away a member of the community, you then, Mr. Weston, did the same thing. There was not a warning from the chair, there were no two-chair warnings. So, what you doing is you retaliating against a black brother, Armando Herman, a violation of forty-two USC, nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-five, and fifty-two point one of the Bayan Act. So, that's why Greg Smith today will be going to eleven thousand Wilshire Boulevard, he turning it all into the FBI. Let's give him a hand, Greg Smith, he gonna get a reward, and finally, the biggest thing is, is that you all motherfu...
Thank you, uh, Mr. Spindler. Your time, Mr. Spindler, your time has expired, please take your seat, you're now disrupting the meeting yourself. Okay, now, uh, Madam Clerk, let's run through, are they, did anyone else sign up to speak that I didn't call their name? Please raise your, Mr. Spindler, you already spoke. All right, let's, uh, go through the items that are left on the agenda.
Item one?
Okay, let's, uh, Mr. Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
To our vice.
Thank you, let's now move to items six through ten. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
To our vice.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, what's before this body?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, they are posted, they are referred, announcements, members, announcements. I'll just say, let's go rams, and everybody cheer for the hometown team. Uh, let's all rise, let us all rise for adjourning motions, I look into Mr. Corretts, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues, it's with a heavy heart that we mourn the passing of Bernice Lipsitz, a Los Angeles and Council District Five resident of seventy years, who passed away shortly after her ninetieth birthday, and, uh, some of her family members are here with us today. Mrs. Lipsitz was born in nineteen twenty-eight in Pittsburgh, and like many other post-war families, Bernice and her husband Norman decided to head west towards a brighter, warmer future. The couple drove across the country in the late nineteen forties as pioneers to Los Angeles, and as she told it, they named their old jalopy Bessie and would exclaim, "Come on, Bessie, we can make it to California." Once they arrived, Bernice and her husband had to make a life for themselves in this new city as they arrived before their friends and family. Bernice wound up as a devout civil servant, working for various federal departments throughout Los Angeles. And one of her favorite stories to share was of a time when she was working as a clerk for the federal court, and in the middle of a court case, she discovered evidence that the man on trial was about to be mistakenly convicted for a heinous crime, and she ran down to the courtroom, disturbed the court proceedings, and saved the man from a life in prison. And she was very proud of her accomplishments throughout her life. Following her civil service career, she worked closely with various Jewish organizations throughout the city and fervently served her community. Bernice Lipsitz is survived by four children and eight grandchildren, some of whom are here today, including her grandson Aviv Kleiman, who is my planning deputy. Los Angeles has lost an incredible human being, and we mourn with them and, uh, wish her rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts, and before we move on, Madam Clerk, if we could send item eight forthwith. Okay, I'm still looking to my left side, uh, I don't see any other adjournings to my left, I'm now looking to my right, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, colleagues, today I rise in memory of Ms. Leila Maye, Maye, who sadly passed away on Monday. Born in nineteen twenty-five, Ms. Maye was a longtime resident of Council District Nine. She moved to South LA in nineteen fifty-two, shortly thereafter, and in nineteen fifty-four, she married the love of her life, Marcel Maye. Together, they had six children, including Mrs. Miss Phyllis Maye, a former employee of Council District Nine, and a janitor, and a current employee of the Bureau of Street Services. Ms. Maye was a community activist known as the mayor of Forty-third Street. She worked to make sure that her neighbors were aware of what was going on, what their rights were, and how, how to stay safe in turbulent times. Mrs. Maye, until her passing, was the memory of Council District Nine. She shopped at Dolphins of Hollywood Record Store, uh, and was a, and attended the historic YMCA on Twenty-Eighth Street. She was a witness to the civil unrest in the sixties, the Watts riots, the shootout with the LAPD on Central Avenue, and other events. As the years passed, she watched the neighborhood change around her, sometimes for good, sometimes for bad. Through it all, she remained true to her home in South LA. She would often share with her family and friends or anyone passing by, the word that her father, Clarence Devon, played saxophone at the famous Club Alabama at the Dunbar Hotel on Central Avenue, on the same stage as Billie Holiday, Gerald Wilson, and comedians like Moms Mabelly. She was survived by six children, eighteen grandchildren, eighteen great-grandchildren, and eight great-great-grandchildren, and her husband Marcel. Information about her services are pending, but may she rest in peace.
Okay, I'm continuing to look to my right side, I don't see any other adjourning motions to my right. Members have a good weekend, uh, this meeting is adjourned, go ram.
Go rams.